Good evening. I'll be reading tonight's items to be referred. These are items that the City Council will consider during their committee meetings. Our committee meetings are scheduled as our third item of business. The first is a request by Ron Mason regarding claims, the Administration and Finance Committee Regular Agenda. Request by Ron Mason regarding intercap resolution for approval of loan to the Administration and Finance Regular Agenda. Request by Jim McGrath regarding a resolution establishing the city's role and functions for the city in the realm of housing as drafted by the Subcommittee on Affordable Housing, Administration and Finance Regular Agenda. Request by Jim McGrath regarding a resolution establishing a housing vision for the City of Missoula as drafted by the Subcommittee on Affordable Housing to the Administration and Finance Committee Regular Agenda. Request by Linda Tracy regarding discussion of salary increases for the Mayor, City Treasurer and Municipal Court Judge, the Administration and Finance Committee Regular Agenda. Request by Ron, whoop, I think I read that one already. Request by Craig Sweet regarding procedure fulfilling Mayor's vacancy to the Committee of the Whole Regular Agenda. Request by Jim Nugent regarding Mount Jumbo acquisition to the Conservation Committee Regular Agenda. Request by Pat Kiley regarding adhering to regulation requiring the requests for extensions to the submittal deadline for final plots be made prior to the submittal deadline. Petition number seven five three four through petition number seven five three eight. These are petitions to annex to the City of Missoula and are on file in my office. That's the office of the City Clerk here at City Hall from eight to five if you'd like to review those. Request by Lisa Moisey regarding extension request for Valley View Estate summary plot to the Platte Annexation and Zoning Committee Regular Agenda. Request by Steve King regarding change order number one for special improvement District 514 congestion mitigation air quality gravel streets paving phase one to the Public Works Committee Consent Agenda. Request by Ed Clay regarding janitorial contract for 800 West Broadway to the Public Works Committee Regular Agenda. And finally, a request by Marty Rabine regarding contract award for a bucket mounted asphalt milling machine to the Public Works Committee Regular Agenda. That concludes our items to be referred. Once again, our committees are scheduled as a third item of business. An added note this week is that the city operations will be closed except for the
This meeting of the Missoula City Council, the record will show that all of the council members are present. Let me ask if there are any corrections to the meeting, last meeting's minutes. If not, we'll accept the minutes as presented. Go on to scheduling of committee meetings.
Okay, the Administration and Finance Committee will be meeting Wednesday, 3rd of July at 3:00. The Platte Annexation and Zoning Committee will not be meeting this week. Public Safety and Health Committee will not be meeting this week. Appointments Committee will not be meeting this week. Cable will not be meeting this week. Public Works Committee will be meeting Monday at 6:40 PM. That's the 8th of July. That's a change from what's printed on your schedules. Committee of the Whole will be held Tuesday, the 2nd, that's tomorrow, at 4:00 to discuss the process for the mayoral appointment. Craig?
Is 4:00 a better time for folks than, say, 2:00? Because I believe there's an opening at 2:00. We could do it at 2:00 in the afternoon instead of 4:00.
Actually, when I called you, Craig, it would be Tuesday or Wednesday at 2:00 because there's a committee at 11:00 on Wednesday. There's another committee at 1:00. Well, we thought Public Works was going to be at 1:00, so there's one other committee.
We'll leave it where it is at 4:00.
Is everybody okay with 4:00?
2:00 Wednesday is better for people. 2:00 o'clock on Wednesday would be better. Okay, we'll do Committee of the Whole then at 2:00 Wednesday from 2:00 to 3-ish.
Okay, so we're going to have a Committee of the Whole meeting on July 3rd, that's Wednesday, at 2:00 to talk about the process for mayoral appointments. And also, we'll be meeting Tuesday, the 2nd of July, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM to review the administrative offices and Missoula Redevelopment Agency budgets. The Conservation Committee will be meeting Wednesday, the 3rd of July, at 11:00. And the Subcommittee on Affordable Housing will not be meeting this week.
Are there any other announcements of committee meetings? If not, before we go on with the agenda, it looks like we've got some Boy Scouts here. Would you care to introduce your scouts?
So I'm Mr. Leiter. We're here for our mayorhead, his committee.
All right, glad to have you here. Thanks for being here. There are no items for final consideration tonight. We do have a public hearing on a rezoning request for River Street Family Estates to be residential with a planned unit development overlay. This property is located at the northeast corner of River and Inez Streets as lots 40 through 45 Block 1 Cooks Edition. Staff report, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Is this on? Yes. As the mayor said, this is a public hearing on a request from Charlie McKenzie to rezone property near the northeast corner of River Street and Inez Avenue from D Industrial to B with a PUD overlay. The B zone is a residential zone. Staff's recommending approval of this rezoning request subject to conditions contained within your staff report. The PUD rezoning designates five lots for single-family residences. Within the same ownership but not part of this PUD is a proposed five-plex at the corner of this intersection. The PUD request allows for development which meets overall residential density within this ownership. The proposal asks for deviations from front and side yard setbacks as well as setbacks for uncovered parking. As well, it imposes more restrictive standards, development standards regarding height, building coverage, lot size, building facades and building separations. Attachment G to the staff report depicts a conceptual site plan and elevation drawings for this PUD. The site plan shows how the homes will be situated on the five lots in concept, with the homes located at the front of the lots and detached garages accessing off the rear of the property from a paved alley. Each residence will provide the required two off-street parking spaces. The PUD requires a minimum separation between the house and garage of 30 feet, which will result in a private yard area in the rear of approximately 900 square feet. Each residence will have a front porch spanning a minimum of 85% of the front building facade and will be at least six feet in depth. The PUD also assures that no more than 50% of each lot will be covered by building or paved driving surfaces. And this building coverage area is exclusive of open porches. The remainder of the lot would then be developed with landscaping, either vegetation or other types of hard landscaping such as patios, decks, brick or bark. Mr. McKenzie has proposed a use easement between structures, which is further explained in staff report attachment B5. It might be helpful to refer to that attachment. It is somewhat complicated easement that we haven't seen very often here. Simply, the use easement will allow each home to have full use on one side of the yard between homes, and the adjacent home will have full use of the yard area between garages. The purpose for this easement is to allow for a larger usable side yard space on one side of the house instead of two narrow strips of space on both sides of the house. The comprehensive plan designates the property as medium-density multifamily residential. And OPG staff finds the development proposal in compliance with the comp plan land use designation as well as the comprehensive plan goals and objectives. This property is part of the Urban Renewal District 2, and MRA supports the project and has provided comments on this rezoning in your staff report attachment I, or excuse me, J. Existing land uses in this area are a mix of mostly residential with some commercial and light industry mixed in. The proposal is intended to meet a need for affordable single-family homes on small lots which have been acknowledged by the City Council and the Housing Task Force. The property will be serviced by City Sewer and Water. City agencies did not have any adverse comment on the request to rezone the property. Staff is recommending three conditions of approval, and I would just like to address the third one. The first two are pretty standard for PUD requests. The third one states that each residence shall include additional fenestration on at least one side of each structure to provide for more light and air inside and a more open feeling between structures, subject to the approval of OPG. Staff is suggesting more windows on at least one side of each residence. The increased fenestration on the one side of each residence would reduce a tunnel effect when occupying the side yards. This would also enhance the livability of the development and therefore the public health and general welfare. Staff suggests a condition of approval requiring the larger window on the east wall, which is the dining room. Mr. McKenzie submitted revised building elevations showing increased windows on the west wall. However, staff still feels that windows on the east wall could be enlarged to meet those goals. The Planning Board conducted a public hearing on this rezoning request on June 18th and voted nine to zero to recommend approval subject to staff's conditions contained in the staff report. And finally, this evening, the request is protested by adjacent lot owner of Lot 39. The letter of protest has been distributed on your desk this evening, and this will require nine votes of council to approve the rezoning request.
Thanks. Are there any questions for Jenny? Thanks. Mrs. Herbig?
Do you happen to know if they're double-pane windows? And also, has the developer agreed to putting in more windows? Because it does look peculiar with the tiny windows that are there.
I'd have to defer to Charlie for the double-pane window question. If you look in Attachment G, the attachment that you're looking at was the original submittal for building elevations. Attachment G was on your staff report, and I can pull one out for you. It looks like this. It's just larger elevations of the sides. It shows that he has proposed to increase the windows on this west wall where the kitchen and living room are. But on this other side, the east wall, there's a small window in the dining room, and staff is recommending either another window of a comparable size adjacent to it in the dining room or perhaps enlarging it to one window, which would help to break up that facade a little bit more.
Is there anyone here to testify on behalf of the applicant, the developer?
My name is Charlie McKenzie, M-C-K-E-N-Z-I-E. I'm a builder and have been living here in Missoula for four or five years now. And one of the reasons I came here was because I've got priced out of the housing market in San Francisco where I'm native from. And to that end, I've concentrated on being a builder who does affordable housing. And also, I was kind of appalled by the urban sprawl that's happening in Missoula. So to that end, I've concentrated on infill development. The River Street Family Estates is an excellent example of this infill development. In this time of exorbitant land costs, the ability to build in the FHA price range is becoming increasingly difficult, and to do so tastefully is even more difficult. River Street Family Estates is a tasteful development which tries to retain the charm of the neighborhood by using Victorian-style architecture, complete with front yards, porches and dormers, to blend into the rural settingness in the middle of urban Missoula. The main avenue used to keep housing costs down is to keep lot sizes to the lower range of the current B zoning. River Street Family Estates will provide homeowners with detached housing as opposed to the zero-lot-line housing which is currently in vogue for affordable housing. Side yards, while admittedly not large, are used more efficiently than the currently necessary six-foot-seven on each side by giving one homeowner exclusive use of 10-foot of side yard. The photos of a similar project should be in the staff report. The project was on Bainbridge Island in Washington State. And I talked to the city planners on Bainbridge Island, and they felt that it was a very successful Essentially, I had planned this project, and I guess after I had had it all planned, the Affordable Housing Task Force or Committee came out with some recommendations on how we could stop urban sprawl and what would be the best way to keep housing costs down. And just by coincidence, the development that I'm proposing meets all of those requirements or suggestions. Overall, the project will improve the infrastructure. I'll be adding curbs, sidewalks. I'll be paving the alley. It'll be on sewer. It'll increase the tact space of the area, and it'll preserve a gentrified feeling of the neighborhood because it is designed with a Victorian style. I think that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Mr. Reedy?
Probably a question to staff. Is this MRA, is this covered by the little Davis Bacon? Our vision prevailing wages?
The MRA or, I'm sorry?
Being a MRA project, if it has to be covered by that?
It's not an MRA project, just the sidewalks.
Okay, do you pay the prevailing wage?
I pay well over the prevailing wage.
Mrs. Herbig?
What kind of outreach did you do with the neighbors before you started this plan?
I met with the immediate neighbors, Mr. Mercile, who's had the letter of protest in here. Originally, I had had the design with the five-plex right next to his house and then the five houses on the corner, and he felt that it would be more comfortable for him, and he thought it would be a better, I think, traffic pattern if the five-plex was placed on the corner and the five single-family houses were placed next to his house. The current zoning theoretically allows me to put about 19 efficiency apartments on that same piece of land, and I'm proposing to put on the five single-family houses.
Yeah, I like the concept of the plan, copying Bainbridge, but I'm concerned that you didn't get out to more of the neighborhood to convince them of how good the plan was.
I also had a neighborhood meeting, and I met with all the neighbors after the variance proposal which I had applied for previously. And Mr. Mercile and, I can't remember the other name, were the only, there was one other person who showed up, and those were the only two after handing out flyers to everybody in the 150-foot radius.
Ms. Crowley?
I'm curious. My first question is, how much are these houses going to cost?
What I'm trying to do is bring them under FHA limit, which would be 104,005.
104,005,000?
104,500 dollars, which is the current FHA limit.
$100,000 for these homes, these five?
Underneath that price, yes.
You know, I've been to that property. You are not only going to have these five homes at $100,000, but then you're going to have the five-plex. How big is the five-plex going to be?
The current design we're working for is 48 by 30, designed to look like a single-family house rather than apartment house.
And when you had the neighborhood meeting, two people came?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, it's just that when I went down there to visit the site, two of the neighbors on the west, to the west of the site, were there. And they both felt they weren't in favor. They'd rather see an industrial building go in there because of all the traffic and because it would seem like there was a lot of overcrowding. They already have a four-plex, I believe, behind them on California Street, that red brick building?
Yes.
And then there's another four-to-eight-plex in the wings, right to the west of them, I guess.
When we were at the variance proposal, one of the people who did complain was a person who had a duplex and received a variance for that, and I couldn't understand that he would complain about being too dense. And as I said, the zoning currently allows me theoretically to put in, on the total property I own, I could put in 28 efficiency apartments. So what I'm proposing is a much lower density than what is allowable under the current zoning without having to go through the PUD or any type of variance. It would have to be accepted by zoning because it does meet the current zoning regulations.
I applaud your desire to create affordable housing, but even $100,000 for these small buildings seems like a lot to call it affordable.
I can understand your concern, but perhaps if you look at what land costs are these days and what building costs are, you'd understand that it's almost impossible to build anything new under that price range.
Mr. McGrath and then Mr. Spawn seller. Mr. Spawn seller?
Just a couple of questions, Mr. McKenzie. Is it fair to say that, and I'm just asking a question, that the design, purchase of materials, and that's all happening locally?
Yes, that's correct.
And? And, well, these aren't imported manufactured-type homes, these will be stick-built on-site, right?
That's correct. All the contractors that I use are local contractors. All my suppliers are local suppliers.
And then just one more question, I was curious what your understanding is of the current growth management effort, and, I mean, you must have some idea what the city's policy is in regards to urban sprawl.
My understanding is that the city is encouraging developers to use smaller lots to decrease the amount of land, the infrastructure costs, and try and keep people closer to the urban areas rather than having them on one-acre lots outside of the city where they would commute and cause more problems to the infrastructure.
Thanks, Mr. McKenzie. Jenny?
I just wanted to clarify the notification that was done to meet legal requirements as well as beyond what was legally required, since several of you asked that question. Back in April or May, when Mr. McKenzie brought the application in for both a variance and a PUD, before we even sent out notifications to neighbors, I suggested that he go door-to-door around the area and speak with his neighbors, and I believe he went to at least adjacent property owners and maybe a little bit beyond. And then he requested the actual list to be able to contact those property owners after the variance was denied in order to try to find out what about the design could be improved. And then, in mid-June, with that same list of property owners within the hundred and fifty feet, all of them were contacted and asked to come to a meeting at the UBC. There's a conference room in the back there. Two people from the neighborhood showed up, Jim Mercile and Lisa Ducharme, and Kathy Dutton from Eagle Watch Manor, who is looking at, Eagle Watch is also looking at this area for residential development. And we talked about the changes in the site plan from early June to late June where the five-plex was switched, and tried to get input and comments and concerns on that, as well as meeting legal notification requirements. So staff's opinion is that Charlie went way beyond the call of trying to solicit neighborhood comment on this rezoning request.
Thanks. Is there anyone else who would like to offer testimony? Please.
My name is Bill Wall. I live directly across the street from the proposed project. I've never been notified by anybody. Most of my neighbors have gotten a letter by, definitely haven't. I've never really seen Charlie before, and as it stands right now, there's River Street, First Street, and Second Street all come together at California Street. There's been three five-plexes built on Russell down there on Second. There's an eight-plex that hasn't even, oh, you know, it's just been completed on Second. There's an eight-plex on the corner of Inez and First. They put another six-plex in on First and between Russell and Inez this past spring. And it's just, you know, there's like sixty cars in three blocks, and they all got to come right to one intersection to get out of the area, you know, the irrigation ditch runs along the side there. And I got pictures of the corner of First and California Street. You go out there in the morning, you can't even, you can't see anything coming, it's just wall-to-wall cars. The guy that built last year, Greg Nemo, built that eight-plex there, low-income, he's left a lot, you know, he's never touched it, he's got fifty-five gallon drum out there, you know, all of his debris, it's got weeds three feet tall, and he was supposed to beautify the neighborhood. Well, each contractor's could just come in, they want to make money, get in and get out, and, you know, we're left with what's left, which is basically a mess, you know? Right now, the corner, Mike, the guy next to me who lives on Inez and River Street, he owns four lots there, he's already zoned to put a six-plex in right there, so he can put a six-plex there, he's going to have a five-plex across the street, and, you know, everything's just jammed in, and it's just not fair to people who live there. It used to be a nice neighborhood until they put that sewer in, and now it's, and there's just change overnight, and it's kind of overwhelming, really, to live there. Appreciate if you guys ever go stop down and see what's going on down there, because it's kind of out of the way of place, but it's right close to downtown, and it's just, you know, it's just coming rentals and people in and out all times going through your neighborhood, and it's just not the way it used to be. That's my feeling on it.
I think we have some questions for you, Ms. Tracy, and then Mr. McGrath.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Wall, I appreciate your comments. I've run through your neighborhood, or when I used to run, and it really is a very quiet place. You've just heard Mr. McKenzie say that he could build twenty-eight efficiency apartments on the same land, which seems to me to speak against, or would be against, what you've just spoken to here.
Yeah, I'd be against that also.
So what you're saying is, you don't want twenty-eight efficiencies and you don't want this project either?
I'd go for the houses without the five-plex, you know, keep it at least residential. And that's where the, you know, I don't know, the contractor money-making thing is in, and they're just, you know, they're into making that money, and I believe in that and everything, but don't destroy our neighborhood in the meantime, you know?
Mr. McGrath?
Well, essentially, Ms. Tracy asked my question. We don't have a decision to make on the five-plex, it's going in. What we have to decide is whether we give them a special permission to not build multifamily but to build these five single-family homeowner houses. Which would you prefer?
I'd rather have the five single-family houses. You know, even industrial sites, you know, they'd probably go in at five o'clock at night.
Ms. Crowley?
Can I ask Mr. McKenzie, is that our choice?
Mr., we are, we need to get this all on tape, so, thanks.
Charlie McKenzie, we haven't made a decision as to what we would do if we aren't able to build those five houses, but we would definitely look at developing it as multifamily.
Thanks. Is there any further testimony?
My name is George Mercile, and I live in the lots that are adjacent, or right alongside of Mr. McKenzie's project. And I've attended about as many of these meetings as I possibly could, and I've lived in the neighborhood for over forty-five years, and it's a very peaceful and unique neighborhood. And I don't object to having some neighbors move in, I would, I wouldn't object to four or five houses being built out there. But the thing is that all of us people down there, we're built out next to the street, the sidewalks would be so far out of place you couldn't believe it, and we're pretty well enhanced in the quietness of our neighborhood, the uniqueness of it to start with. And if you sit down and just figure just a minute, we're talking about a family home here on a lot that is twenty-nine feet wide, and a house that's twenty-five feet high, with a yard of five foot on each side, with a little single-car garage in the back. Are these families going to own a snowmobile? Are they going to own a motorhome? Are they going to have a trailer? Are they going to have more than one car? My whole outlook on this, that this is entirely too congested for the neighborhood, the spot of land that that's on, there are four dead-in-streets. There is not a street running north and south between California and Russell Street that goes completely through. The old Milwaukee roadbed on one side blocks off any northwest traffic, north-south traffic, the irrigation ditch blocks any out-north-south on the other end. And as I was going through, looking at some of these things on the project, I noticed that the MRA is offered to fund the sidewalks, the curbs, the street asphalt, and the alley asphalt. This is our money. When you're talking about making livable, unsubsidized building for people in town, how come you're using our tax money to work along with it? I don't understand that part. And I was going through all the zoning and stuff, and I've heard all of this, of what we can get nineteen apartment houses and so on and so forth down in there, but as I was reading through there, I noticed that it was circulated and printed in 1991. And I do not believe that our zoning requirements and allowances in 1991 allowed this kind of a thing on industrial area. I think this was changed by the MRA in the last two years, and I think this is something that we should look up, look back on and maybe change it back to what it originally was, because I was never given any notice of circulation on these zoning changes. That would have been two years ago at the very most. Anyhow, I have nothing bad to say about Charlie. I've worked with him, he did listen and kind of steer that apartment house away from the, my side of the street. But you've got to also take into consideration with those houses sitting that close together, what happens if there's a fire?
Mr. Mercile, we can get more information about the history of the zoning, but the redevelopment agency doesn't have any zoning or rezoning power, and we may be able to find out a little bit more about the history of the zoning later on.
It's my understanding that it was pushed, and it had to be pushed by somebody.
We'll see if we can get some more information about that, Ms. Tracy?
I wonder if we could ask Jenny to respond to Mr. Mercile's question with regard to changes in zoning.
For the record, Jenny Dixon, some of you might recall in February of ninety-four, the D-zone, which is primarily an industrial zone back from the nineteen thirties, which was placed along the railroads and in many areas which have been developed out with residential uses, there was an initiative by the city council to change the D-zone to also allow residential uses because that was how much of the D-zone was developed out. And that change was approved about two and a half years ago to allow residential development in the D-industrial zone according to the B-residential standards, which is, when Charlie refers to being able to build twenty-eight efficiency apartments, it's the B-zone that lets him do that, because when you're in the D, you go back to the B-zone.
Thanks. This is Jen Gurelli.
Jenny, while you're there, I just want to make sure I'm calculating this properly because I missed the PAZ meeting that this was discussed at. If you have five three-bedroom units, you could potentially have a minimum of three people living in each of those units, so that's a minimum of fifteen people, then you have, with perhaps a minimum of fifteen cars. Then you have a five-plex, how many bedrooms are in the, in each unit of the five-plex?
Nine bedrooms?
So we add nine to fifteen, and we're at or above the same level as the multifamily, twenty-eight.
In terms of cars?
In terms of perhaps, or just density, in terms of, so is that? I just want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly.
I actually haven't, I can sit down and do the calculations, but I haven't done that to exactly what could go on this property. Charlie has asserted that twenty-eight efficiency units and could go on the entire ownership. It's kind of complex to calculate it out because it depends on how many bedrooms and in what configuration, so that's a worst-case scenario. Twenty-eight efficiency units, you would assume twenty-eight cars, with this one, you're saying fifteen for the five homes and nine for the five-plex at twenty-four. So if you're counting cars, that's what I would answer.
These are also twenty-five-foot lots, these are not bigger, so that's two hundred, two hundred and seventy-five feet total to build it on.
It's like the calculation, you said twenty-four cars, you were counting bedrooms to begin with, so you said five units, have one car apiece for those, and then the five-
No, we don't, we don't have a definition in our zoning that disallows numbers of persons in units anymore, so theoretically, there could be, in those single-family homes, if there are three bedrooms, there could be three separate people living in those, with each with a car. There's nothing that prohibits that, is what I'm saying. I'm just, I'm just trying to get the numbers straight, I'm not making a judgment.
Well, I need to allow the testimony to proceed here, and maybe we can come back then and cover some of this later.
My name's Lori Welch, and I live at twelve seventy South First West, adjacent to an eight-plex that went in last year. I'm not opposed to the development of the area. I am, however, concerned mostly with the children that live in the eight-plex. I've had about eight to ten kids in my yard, which I don't mind, but they have absolutely nowhere to play.
Excuse me, can you just get a little closer to the mic, we're having trouble picking it up.
Sure. They don't have anywhere to play, there's no room. There's about fifteen feet in front of the eight-plex, and there's a little grass there. So what they end up doing is going over to the irrigation ditch, which is really precarious, or they play either in the vacant lot that serious construction has left, pallets, drums, bricks, boards, rebar, and they build little forts with all these things. And I just really believe that for all of the building that is going on, there should be some type of common ground or easements for parks or recreation for the people who have to reside in these dwellings, because as it is now, there really isn't anything. So are there any laws that require or zoning that requires for parks and recreation within the perimeters of these developments?
When we have subdivisions that are required to go through subdivision approval, then there are state laws that require set aside of park lands, but most of the development that you've seen there isn't subject to that. I think probably that the best approach here is to try to do some neighborhood planning and determine what the need for parks and playgrounds might be, and then work with the city on trying to get some of that developed. But I, I think it would be a mistake to depend upon state subdivision law to have that effect here. Ms. Crowley?
You know, may I ask you, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
You know, you said there's an eight-plex behind you, now do they have parking in the rear?
Yes, they do.
Do they use it?
Rarely. They park on the street, it's more convenient for them because their front doors are all facing the street, so they, ninety percent of them park on the street.
Mr. Sweet?
Thank you.
I think shortly, very formally, that that area that you're speaking of where you live will be connected to McCormick Park through some bike path and trails, which will put a large park probably within a couple minutes' walk, and multiple facilities.
Any other testimony? Any other testimony? If there's not, we'll close the public hearing. Is there anyone who has reason to return this to committee? Mr. McGrath? And it will be returned to committee and then come from the committee for a vote at a later point. Thank you all for your testimony. Next on our agenda is public comments. Are there any comments from citizens tonight?
Good evening, I'm Randy Atman, I live at two fifty-seven South Easy Street in Missoula, Montana. I work at Missoula Community Access Television just down Spruce Street here, a block, and every three months, the Busky Group of Sacramento, California releases the Community Programming Index, which is the only regularly compiled statistics on programming, training, and overall use of community access cable TV channels in the country.
Excuse me just a minute, Randy. Excuse me just a minute, Randy. We seem to be buzzing a little bit here, having quite finished the public hearing, I think. So we'll, we'll wait for conversations to die down. Thanks, go ahead.
Thank you. We just received the first quarter report from the Community Programming Index. And as usual, Missoula Community Access Television is among the best of the best in both our budget category and cable franchise size category. MCAT leads the nation in eight of the twenty statistics compiled, including training enrollment, new people certified, video editing system usage, and TV studio usage. We're quite pleased and proud that members of our community continue to make MCAT as busy and as successful as any local TV station in the U.S. of A. And we thank all of our volunteer producers. We recently had MCAT's youngest producers in the studio when three-to-five-year-olds from Clark Fork Preschool came in to, um, do a program entitled "The Making of Insects." And there was a nice write-up and a picture in the Missoula Independent. And just wanted to let folks know that this will run again. This program runs again on MCAT Tuesday, July sixteenth at eight P.M. and July nineteenth, which is a Friday, at five-thirty P.M. And on a personal note, I wish Mayor Chemis all the best during the next chapter of his life.
Is there any other citizen comment? If not, we'll go on to communications from the mayor. And I'll speak about that subject just briefly. We'll have more opportunity to, for me to address you about my work with you. Uh, I, I have been asked more than a few times whether there were any particular frustrations that led to my, um, decision. And I, I have said, without hesitation, that that's not it. Although, of course, this, this job has its frustrations as the council job does as well. But, uh, but this has been very satisfying work for me and I've, I've really very much enjoyed working with all of you. Part of the reason that it was fairly easy for me to make this choice when, when this opportunity came is that I have known for so long that the next phase of my life should be involved with working in the West. So I did welcome that opportunity and it, it seemed to be pretty well structured in the way that it was presented by the University of Montana. Another reason that I felt content about leaving now is that I feel that the city organization itself is in good shape and, and that, um, it is serving the people of Missoula well. And part of that is that I think we have more vigor and, and more energy and a, and a higher level of a, of a sense of responsibility on the city council than we have had before. And, and for that reason too, I feel, um, content about, about passing these reins on to someone else. That, of course, is your job to determine and, and I will be glad to be available for any questions that you might have about what the job actually entails and what you might want to look for in candidates. The, the one piece of unsolicited advice that I would give the council tonight is to abide as scrupulously as you can by the process that you have set up. We do, we're required to give citizens an opportunity to apply for the position. I'm hopeful that we will get some good applications, that there will be interest in the position. And I would hope that, uh, council members would keep an open mind until all of the names are in and, and avoid making commitments until we know exactly who's interested in the job. And I think that we owe that to the citizens of Missoula and for, for what my council is worth, that would be it on that score. And I, I look forward to completing our work of the summer and then I very much look forward to the new work that I'll be going to after that. And with that, I would welcome comments of city council members. This is Herbig.
Uh, I was impressed with an article that came out in, uh, The Missoulian, uh, the community labor donated funds help enhance Linda Vista Boulevard. And I'd like to commend those people for doing that. I think there's going to have to be a lot more of that kind of thing. People wanting improvements in, in parks and that are, are going to have to pitch in because I see, um, that our budget is going to be pretty well constrained, um, in, in the future. And I know that people want more and more services and don't want to pay, uh, higher taxes, so something has to give. And so once again, I, I do commend these people for their volunteering. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Bennett.
First of all, I wanted to serve, uh, notice to the, uh, rest of my fellow council members that I do intend, uh, in probably next week's meeting to, uh, ask reconsideration of a resolution that I had brought up initially regarding motorized transportation in Missoula, which was tabled. Um, get out your masons, uh, between now and then, that tabling is, is only a temporary motion and a permanent, um, tabling would require debate, which we were not allowed on the original motion. So that, that will be coming up. Uh, secondly, I would like to congratulate Mayor Chemis on his, his new job. Despite the fact that I've been one of his political opponents over the years, I can easily envision a circumstance where I would miss him up there. So, uh, congratulations and good luck on your, your future.
Thank you. Sometime we'll get you to describe that circumstance. Mr. McGrath?
Um, because people generally complain about things and I'm no exception. I wanted to take the opportunity to, uh, commend, uh, the work of a Parks Department employee and who is, remains nameless only because they don't know what his name is. He was working over in the North Side Park and my, um, spouse and son were playing in the park and my son lost his glasses, um, I think with a little help from some of the kids in the park. And they couldn't find it. And those of you who know, that's a fairly significant, um, thing to lose. And the, uh, Parks employee looked and looked and swore that he would try and find it after they had to come home and in fact found it and, um, caught up with us and, and got his, uh, glasses back. So, um, I, I wanted to publicly commend that, uh, going the extra mile. And, um, I'm sure that it happens all the time, actually.
Thanks. Ms. Tracy?
I just wanted to announce to my fellow council members that in the Administration and Finance Committee meeting on Wednesday, we will take up the Capital Improvement Program as per your request. Last time we had a full hour for our Administration and Finance Committee. Uh, that will be the only thing on the agenda unless we end up with a little, um, extra time. In that case, we'll take up Jim McGrath's two housing-related resolutions. You've got copies of those drafts in your packet with the Housing Subcommittee, uh, report or minutes from last week. If we end up with just about five minutes or so of time, then we won't pick up those items. We'll hold them for another time.
Ms. Susan Gurelli?
Well, Dan, I think I'll save my, uh, I don't know whether to say condolences or my, uh, congratulations and goodbyes until you're actually gone, but I'll really miss you. Um, I wanted to say that I've been getting some very interesting calls about what's happening in Conservation Committee from some members of the public and I don't doubt it. And, um, I want to just welcome more comments, if people have them, about how to construct these ordinances, uh, and, and for the management of the open space lands. And, you know, tell members of the, the Conservation Committee that it's too bad we need to meet before this holiday, but I really think that we do need to do this because we've got to get something in place by the closing of the Mount Jumbo lands. So we will be meeting this, both this Wednesday and next Wednesday to try to move something along there. Secondly, I, most of you probably found in your mailboxes the, um, packet that I had distributed to the Neighborhood Network on the livability standards in neighborhoods. This was scheduled to come up, uh, next Tuesday on the ninth. And apparently, I've gotten a couple of calls from, uh, the president of the Neighborhood Network that I had been given the wrong date. And, uh, apparently either a memo has already been sent out or Perry Lacour is in the process of sending out a memo to those people who had already received my memo that the date should in fact be Thursday, the eleventh of, um, July, which is the same, it's still a week from tomorrow, but Thursday instead of Tuesday. So I'll keep you posted if there's another change, but I, I just, um, regret that that happened and, uh, we'll see if we can get it straightened out. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Crowley? Council comments? All right. Mr. Harrison? Mr. Anderson?
Just like to take this opportunity to wish everybody a safe and sane Fourth of July coming up and we'll see you next week.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Al, Mary Ellen Sampson, on their forty-fifth wedding anniversary, which is today. And, uh, we'll start the process of selecting a mayor soon. I know that, uh, July ninth is the date that all the applications have to be in, but technically speaking, the position doesn't have to be filled by state law to a month after the mayor leaves. And I don't want to be rushed into anything on this. I, it's my own personal belief that we should go outside the council if possible and get somebody with experience with budgets, get somebody experienced with handling people if we can. I think it'd be better for all of us because, uh, somebody neutral to start with. If we can't, then we'll have to go into the council. But, uh, I don't want to be rushed. I hope that people apply from outside the council, good people. I've been called and I know two or three that are considering it. And I hope we all go up and get in, uh, review this with open eyes and, and do the best for the city of Missoula and not any individual party or any political position.
Mr. Morgan? Mr. Sweet?
I, um, want to thank Officer Guy Baker and many other fine officers. My place of business was broken into last week and the four teenagers who were robbing my business were caught within minutes after leaving my business. And, um, I appreciate them responding rather quickly to the call that came in from our, the night watchman out at, at Beach Transportation. So thanks, officers, for doing a great job. Um, in your boxes, you will find, um, a draft of the Living Wage Ordinance. And if you have comments about it or anything you'd, um, thing you'd like to see added to it or any changes in it, if you can make those and scribble on them and put them in my box, that would be great. Then I will have an, a, a second draft drawn up that I will refer to a committee for further action and discussion. Um, sitting here earlier when we were having the public hearing on the PUD over on River Road, River Street, I'm trying to get a sense for how the council's feeling about this particular project. And I was getting quite distressed and discouraged. I would think after two years of the growth management process, our thought about this type of development would have come a lot further than it has. And it just is terribly discouraging that it hasn't. And I have to seriously consider whether I want to continue to support a project, a process like growth management if we're not going to walk the walk. If we're just going to talk the talk, then it isn't worth my time and money.
Mr. Sponcel.
Well, I'd just like to thank Mayor Chemis for your service to the city. I think that our leaders need to be vision holders and you certainly are that. So I thank you for that. Uh, another comment, transportation planning for the Missoula area twenty years into the future. Public comment period is coming up in July. And, uh, citizens out there, we definitely need people to, uh, have their input on this transportation plan. It's critical. If you're concerned about what your neighborhoods are like and, and what this place is like, then transportation's a big part of that. I really hope that people will get out and, and have some input into this plan. As well, I'd like to make a comment on, on, uh, our preoccupation with, um, reexamining urban infill policy. That, I think we spent two years in growth management and we know what the consequences of inadequate urban infill is, and that is urban sprawl and certainly will be the death of this place. And I certainly hope that my fellow council members and, uh, fellow Missoulians will support a good, uh, program of urban infill that will create good neighborhoods and will eliminate urban sprawl.
There are no items on the consent agenda tonight, so we'll go on to committee reports, Administration and Finance Committee. Ms. Tracy?
We have just one claim for this period and I would move the claim for the total of one thousand eight dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. I don't remember ever having had a motion like that before. Cable TV Committee? Mr. Sweet?
The committee recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the revised Missoula Community Access Agreement for administration of cable television access channels for the city of Missoula, and I would so move.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Reedy?
I, uh, I'm not against community access television, but I am against the cost of it and I will vote against it. I realize I'll be the only one, but I think it's a little high and budget constraints are going to be tight and, uh, I'm sure it'll continue without me, without my vote, but it's just kind of a protest, protest vote on, on the cost.
Mr. Sponcel?
Well, I've talked to any number of Missoulians, in fact, a great number of Missoulians in the last year that, uh, I wouldn't have suspected that they were MCAT watchers for one reason or another, but it's amazing how many people watch MCAT. And I, I'm just totally flabbergasted. Uh, I think it's one of the most useful, uh, vehicles that we have in this community for information giving and, uh, community participation. And I fully support, uh, the MCAT budget.
Mr. McGrath?
Um, yeah, I support the contract as proposed. It's essentially, um, holding to what we've done in the past. Um, one of the things that we've talked about a little bit in the Cable TV Committee is the need for a government access coordinator to allow the city to take advantage of, of the resources better. Uh, the school district does a pretty good job. Uh, other, um, people in the community are, but we don't take very, uh, much advantage of it. But we're not including that in this contract. We wanted to have that as sort of an overall discussion in the, in the budget process that we're undergoing. So we want to look forward to that, um, as we come into next few weeks.
Ms. Tracy?
I just wanted to make it clear for people in the public that the MCAT budget does not come from your tax dollars, but comes directly from the franchise fees that your cable television operator pays. So if you have TCI or Masada or Satcom, they pay a fee to the city of Missoula to be able to provide that service over, um, our right-of-ways, if I'm not mistaken. And it's from a, a portion of those fees that we allocate to cable access television. And I think from time to time, uh, we've had various representatives of the MCAT and the MCAT Board come before us to report, as Randy did this evening, on the success of the numbers of Missoulians who take advantage of the training and the opportunities to be a volunteer producer, to produce local programming. And I can tell you, um, as, as some of the other city council members have experienced, there are a lot of people who watch this broadcast on Monday nights. I personally know several people who go home at lunchtime on Tuesdays to watch them again. So, um, it's very, it's a very important community service and I commend you for the work that you've done.
This is Herbig.
I appreciate that information, Linda. Some of it I was not aware of. Uh, being a relatively new, uh, council member, uh, I wonder, is this a reduction from, uh, what they have received, not just in the last couple of years, but prior to that? It seemed to me like there was a cut somewhere.
Okay, I could speak to that maybe.
Mr. Sweet.
For roughly the last five years, they've been receiving $100,000 of franchise fee. From time to time, they have come to the Cable Committee saying, you know, the rent's going up, the equipment's falling apart, a lot of different things have changed, inflation is hitting them. But by and large, except for a $10,000 infusion here a couple of seasons ago, it is held pretty firm, and in real dollars, that $100,000 was probably deflating rather than, you know. So, when MCAT wanted to talk about their new contract, they put a number out there, and we on the Cable Committee said, "Look, you know, if you were treated, being treated like any other city department, you probably would have gotten 2% or 3% increases for the last four or five years to cover your costs of doing business, and you weren't receiving those. We'll consider doing that." And that put us up into the realm of about $136,000 to $145,000, in that range. And that's where we negotiated into that range. They were actually seeking quite a bit more than that.
Mr. Bennett, and then Mr. Harrison.
Well, I've heard it said that this is simply a catch-up with inflation, or a general question of keeping even, and yet I recall the budget when I came on council as being $100,000, give or take $1,000. I think that was negotiated shortly before I was on council, shortly after I came on, and this has only been two and a half years ago. That contract was brought forth for renegotiation in midterm and added to, and now we're looking at $140,000, and with automatic escalators in there. Furthermore, with a ratchet, an up-ratchet that says if the city's cable revenues increase, MCAT will automatically get a bigger chunk, as long as they ask for it. However, if the revenues decrease, then they still get a big chunk unless the city renegotiates something. So, I guess I don't see too many other city departments that have had a 40% increase since I've been on council, although there are a couple that probably come close, that I have some questions about as well. And I guess I will not be able to support that magnitude of increase for this program.
Mr. Harris.
I just had a question, if anyone would know the status of nationally of franchise fees. It appears to me from this contract that if franchise fees become illegal or something, then we're still paying up to 60%. So, like here, it'd be like $84,000 that we'd be liable for if that was jerked out from under us. And I'd just like to know the status nationally. Are they moving that way, or what's happening with franchise fees?
Mr. Nugent, or Mr. Mason?
Thus far, franchise fees are still being collected. They haven't been struck down by the courts. I think the bigger concern, rather than court cases, is the competition from other sources that might not be subject to franchising regulation that could be on the horizon in future years.
Mr. McGrath.
It's important to understand, though, that if we can no longer collect franchise fees, for example, the contract ends. If it drops below a certain level, we reopen the contract. So, there's enough, we were concerned about those kinds of safeguards. We're not committed to pay them money out of the general fund, for example. And even if it drops below a certain level, we can immediately reopen the discussion and say, "Well, let's take another look at this." So, in the event that the revenues on the franchise fees just take a nosedive, we're pretty well protected in this.
Mr. Sweet.
Also, Mr. Harrison, the National League of Cities did an excellent job lobbying on behalf of all of us to preserve that part of the Telecommunications Act where we regulate our right-of-ways, which, you know, is what essentially the franchise fee is, a fee for using the right-of-ways. And, you know, I would hope that we always have that control over our right-of-ways. It's one of those, it's actually like zoning. And we also maintain control in the new Telecommunications Bill over the location of cellular towers as well, to some extent. But maintaining that right-of-way and being able to have some control over it's real important to communities.
Further discussion? Mr. Anderson.
I wondered if some of the MCAT staff or board could describe your fundraising activities that you undertake throughout the year?
I'm Randy Ammon, Executive Director, also in attendance are Mary Canty, Co-Assistant Director at MCAT, and Bob Cushman, the Chairman of our Board. The Board of Directors has been real active in fundraising, specifically through a September auction, September 20th this year, Friday night, good time, Boone and Crockett Club. We've raised, I believe, $10,000 in the last three years of doing the auction, $10,000 total. Also, in our current contract with the city, we do charge basic fees for training and an annual user fee. So, that's additional money that comes in. We also sell t-shirts, hats, and a snazzy new MCAT mug as fundraising items. So, there are year-round ways we're looking to increase the revenues to keep up with the community demand.
Any further discussion? Mr. Morgan.
With regard to Michael's suggestion that we have a 40% increase here, Michael, that $100,000 goes all the way back to '89. So, we're talking about not two years, but something like seven years during which there has been no inflation increase or incremental increase in the MCAT budget. And it's over that period of time that this is an effort to get us back on the same footing that MCAT was originally, when it was set up back in the '80s.
Further discussion? Mr. Harrison.
I just want to throw a note in here. I remember a time when KUFM came to us and wanted $5,000 to broadcast us over everywhere, and we turned it down because it was way too much.
Further discussion? Now, we'll have a roll call on the contract.
Pass.
Bennett.
Nay.
Crowley.
Yes.
Chingurelli.
Yes.
Harrison.
Pass.
Herbig.
Yes.
McGrath.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Reedy.
No.
Sponcel.
Aye.
Sweet.
Aye.
Tracy.
Yes.
The passes carry change of vote. Anderson? Harrison?
No change.
Eight ayes, two nays, two passes. Mr. Epsom.
The contract is approved. Next is the plat annexation and zoning committee. Mr. Sweet.
The committee recommends that council approve the Missoula-on-Ice addition summary plat subdivision, subject to the following conditions, which I won't read, but will be entered into the record, and I would so move.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Tracy.
I just had a question about the ninth condition that was added, apparently after the meeting. I don't remember it being discussed at the meeting itself, and wondered if there were staff here to explain the dust emission during construction language that we have before us.
Is there anyone who can speak to that condition? Mr. Bowersox.
Thank you. David Bowersox with WGM Group, and I'm here tonight representing Missoula-on-Ice. The ninth condition was suggested by the Missoula County Health Department. It is a standard condition that is included as part of the building permit. It's really kind of redundant to include it as part of the plat, because we are required as part of obtaining the building permit to provide a dust control plan for any building. So, the inclusion of the condition is unnecessary and cannot even be addressed during the plating of the subdivision. Basically, when we report back to OPG as to whether or not we've met the conditions, we will simply tell them that this is a condition that has to do with the building permit and is not addressed at this time. So, it's something that they asked for, but did not need to be included.
Ms. Tracy.
I just wanted to make sure that I was clear. Does this mean that every other project that goes before the building permit process has to comply with this, and therefore, it's not something that we've ever needed to see before?
As I understand it, anything in the air stagnation zone, when it appears before the county health department for their approval, they must provide a plan for dust abatement during construction.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson.
On, I believe it's condition number eight, the minutes talk about a bus pullout, and condition number eight talks about a bus turnaround. Is there, seems to me like there's quite a bit of difference there between a pullout and a turnaround. I just wanted to clarify if they were just talking about providing a turnout area for discharge and passengers to get on, or a large radius place for buses to turn around?
Mr. Sweet.
As I understood the way the conversation was going, there was a request from the Missoula Urban Transportation District that there be a pullout, a place where the bus could pull over and discharge passengers in a safe manner. And whether it was located somewhere within the right-of-way, or adjacent to the right-of-way, or way on the property would be worked out between the engineers and the Missoula Urban Transportation District people. It didn't sound to me like they're talking about a big cul-de-sac-type turnaround, but an area where the bus could pull over to just let passengers off.
Mr. Anderson.
I guess I would suggest a modification, then, to clarify that, that it's a bus pullout rather than a bus turnaround.
Mr. Bowersox, do you have any additional information about that condition?
As I recall at the meeting, it was discussed as a pullout. What we had tried to do was provide a way that during the site planning of the property, that some means of bus discharge would occur. Pullout turnaround, I think that the intention was just an area where a bus could pull over out of, excuse me, out of the traffic lanes, and allow people to get on and off the bus.
Thanks. Do you have a motion to amend the condition? Is that right, Larry? Any discussion on the motion to amend? Ms. Tracy.
I'm sorry, could we have the amendment repeated, please?
Hi, and condition number eight, the words turnaround would be stricken, and the words pullout would be inserted. It would read, "Property owners of Lot 1 and Lot 2 shall incorporate a bus pullout into the site plan."
Further discussion on the amendment? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no? Motion carries. Any further discussion on the plat itself? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Mr. Sweet.
Second item, the committee recommends that council extend the preliminary plat filing deadline for pheasant-run subdivision to September 14th, 1996, and I would so move.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no? Motion carries. Public Safety Committee. Mrs. Herbig.
Thank you. A motion came out of the committee with two voting for and zero passes. The motion being that recommends city council award the contract for the fire training facility to the low bidder, Western Interstate, for the base bid plus options. The completion of option three is contingent on the city council identifying a funding source.
Discussion on the motion? Mr. Sponcel.
Well, as I think everybody's aware, I've had some concerns about this project since it started. I think that what we've learned in this process is that there's any number of things that need to be improved on, and I think in the city's realm, and as well in the private sector. And I hope that certainly those things are addressed in the future. I'm in a unique position here because I happen to be a steel contractor and fabricator, and it gives me some insight into this area that helps me to see the plans in a complete way. And I have had some concerns that the plans could be more complete, and I think that could be said of many projects that we see on the marketplace today. I'm concerned that we're becoming all too complacent in regards to lax design and lax installation of projects in the commercial realm, and I think that this deserves our scrutinization, and we're talking about the safety of our firefighters here. We're also talking about the prudent stewardship of public resources. And I think that we have a role to play in regards to those things as dictated by state law. And I'd just like to call on one of our staff members for a moment to just talk to us for a second about what our duty is here in regards to public policy and scrutinization of contracts and change orders, if I could. Mr. Mason.
Mr. Mason.
I'm not sure I understand the question fully, but the best I can understand, it's a two-part question. One question is the standards or our policy, or the public policy regarding the completeness of plans and specifications that are issued, which in response, the contractors, bidders submit bids. And the second one is regard to change orders. I think generally speaking, the public policy behind the bids and specifications ensure that they're complete enough so that all of the bidders bid on an apples-to-apples basis, and they bid the requirements such that it meets the city's needs, particularly relative to quality and reliability and good price. In regard to change orders, the state of Montana has somewhat of a unique requirement, and that it requires all change orders to be approved by resolution. And based upon my research in that particular area, apparently, it's public policy in the state of Montana that there's substantial concern about change orders, and that they require more scrutinization than even contracts. In Montana, well, according to Montana law, the city can approve a contract by a simple motion, but a change order to that contract has to be approved by resolution. And a resolution, before it's considered, has to be presented to the public and an opportunity given to the public to comment about that resolution, which certainly implies a certain amount of published scrutiny beyond the scope of what applies to a regular contract. Is that responsive to your question, or?
Yes, it is, Mr. Mason. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Herbig.
Well, I think this came up problems because of our high level of responsibility. I think this council has taken on some more insight over what I've seen in the past. We questioned the completeness of this contract, because we're responsible to the public to be sure that they have a safe facility for the fire training center, and also that we're not going to be spending more dollars on future change of order. And we've had a lot of change orders over the years, and I think that this council is just becoming concerned over the obvious change orders. There are definitely going to be change orders when there are things that are unforeseen. But this is why we've given this a lot of thought. And even though Jerry Ballas has a very good reputation for... And even though Jerry Ballas has a very good reputation for good work, we still should have certain rules that, and rights that we abide by.
Mr. Reedy.
I wonder if anybody has figures on the number of change orders we had in the last two new fire stations.
Chief Gibson.
Chuck Gibson, City Fire Chief. Yes, Assistant Chief Marshall Kyle has researched that very thoroughly, so I'll have him up
Mr. Kyle.
Marshall Kyle, Assistant Fire Chief. I'm going to have to get myself a copy. I became extremely alarmed about this situation this morning after hearing a rumor that someone had, someone had made a statement in City Hall that contractors were adding change orders to increase their profits to contract. Because I'm known to be awfully tight in my department, and in fact, I'm called chief by most of the firefighters. So I went through and did a very close analysis of all of our change orders for the last two buildings. If you look on all of those change orders, almost every one of them are government-driven. We either propose them or other governmental agencies propose them. So all the change orders came from us, the government. They didn't come from contractors and they didn't, ninety, over ninety percent of them are from the government. Some of them were some changes by the architect during construction. You'll notice that, I'll just point out two of the largest ones to save you time right now. The largest one at the station number four was the addition of sidewalks for five thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars. Our original plan showed sidewalks. City engineer Joe Aldeary said, "You're wasting money. This is industrial area. Take them out and save your money." We did. About that time, the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation came in. If you were on the council at that time, you remember there were some, a bunch of problems over those people putting in sidewalks. We immediately read what was going on. We put in a change order and put in sidewalks. It was a good, good decision. On the station one, also the largest change over, over ten thousand dollars of that project out of the forty thousand dollars in change orders is for curbs, sidewalks, streets, additions to that area. When we got into it, we started looking at the situation. We were causing drainage problems in the area. One drain sump went directly into Rattlesnake Creek. We wanted to correct that. We had a lot of other problems that cropped up in there, and so we elected to address the whole area. The city, city engineering elected to work with us with the project. So instead of just taking care of our little piece of property down there, the city's property, we went into the main streets and changed all of our drainage to, to follow their direction. So that's, that, you know, I don't want to belabor it. I can answer any questions you have on, on these. There are some of them that are driven by the structure.
Mr. Sweet.
I guess, so you're saying that a lot of the sidewalk improvements and stuff were above and beyond. I, I mean, I guess what I'm thinking when I look and I see provide additional asphalt removal, street curbs and sidewalks, that that should automatically be a part of any project, whether it's a city project or a private one. And should be picked up in the design if there's something dumping water into the creek. But my, I think, so I guess, I guess my question is why should that have been that way?
Well, that was. That was. We, we only had enough money to take care of our own property. There, there are other property holders, mainly the city with the streets down there. When engineering looked at it, they decided, "Why fool around with this little piece? Let's just make a larger package." And that money was also refunded to our budget through gas tax funds because it was public property. This is a contract for a fire station. It's not a contract to take care of all of the city's property in the area.
Thanks, Marshall.
Did that kind of answer your question a little bit, Sweet? What I'm trying to tell you is we rearranged all the curbs on Rattlesnake Street, or Rattlesnake Creek, put a sidewalk over on the other side of the street from our property, rearranged the drainage on the street itself that goes in between the motel and the restaurant. There was considerable site work that is really not on our site. It is community property.
Thanks, Marshall. Any further discussion? Mr. Sponseller.
I had a question for Mr. Ballas if I could. Excuse me.
I'm Jerry Ballas with FDB Architects.
Mr. Ballas, I, I just have a quick question for you. I, I often feel uncomfortable as a steel fabricator, providing information on plans so that I can either bid it or build it, one or the other. And I, quite frequently, we find that there's information missing on plans that, that would be not only of assistance in bidding the project, but on some level is not appropriate for fabricators to provide. And I, I just wondered if you could talk to us for just a moment about this concept of industry practices and, and customary practices.
Mr. Sponseller, I think what, what we try to do when we look at a entire project and we're trying to put it together, we're, we're constantly trying to figure out how much you actually detail a project. It's always going through our minds. And we've got a hundred different contracts in different areas that we have to deal with, and we have to make those judgments based upon how much time we actually put in on a job. When I look at a, at a door, I sit here and I wonder, do I actually have to detail and show where in the heck that door hardware is? Or is it actually established in some kind of an industry standard that is more appropriate and completely details where that hardware goes, where the hinges go, where the locks goes? And, and we have these details all the time. We also come across some details where we think they're, they're very simple. They do not involve any of the aesthetics of the job. They do not involve great safety precautions. And sometimes we like to leave an option open to a fabricator who we believe have standards in their shops that can build something probably a little more effective than we can physically design it. If we draw something down hard and fast, we absolutely have to do that and adhere to the design. If we give somebody a little bit of an option once in a while where it isn't critical to the design and safety of a structure, we feel we can get a more efficient design. I guess we're, we're constantly looking at buildings. They are not buildings like the space shuttle where you completely go in and, and design and fabricate and detail every little item down to the bolt. There's nobody that could even begin to afford the design and, and planning of a building if you had to go through that type of design phase. So there are national standards that are developed. There are a tremendous number of codes and items that are applicable on the jobs, and we do try to rely on those in, in judgmental cases where we feel they aren't detrimental to the job, to give fabricators some option in how those items are built.
Thank you. Mr. Sweet.
I guess I just have a question for Ron Mason regarding change orders in general. On typically what is considered, I notice here that fire station four, the change orders ran two point one percent of the contract. And on the other fire station, two point five, what's considered to be getting up into a high range in terms of percentage? And what is like normal percentage?
I'm not sure of any authoritative sources as to what those thresholds would be. Based upon my experience, it's about a two percent threshold. You know, it's, it's, I, I don't know of any type of project of this complexity that you don't end up having some change orders. It's, but I become very concerned about it if the aggregate total of those change orders exceed two percent. And then I really have to challenge whether the job was, was sufficiently planned or designed or in some cases, it's just some, some unforeseen contingencies that you just couldn't reasonably expect. One of the projects that was involved on behalf of another city is when we removed some, or moved some of the dirt, we found it was the site of a turn-of-the-century coal gasification plant. And it, and it cost us about four hundred thousand dollars in order to remove the toxic chemicals out of the soil. So, you know, some of those things you just can't foresee. Two percent, I think you have to look at it with some latitude on both sides. Whether these change orders reasonably exceeded the two percent, two percent threshold, I, I really haven't looked at them close enough to make that determination.
Mr. Sweet.
And I would suspect within that, that range, you could have a two percent, that is like things that you would expect, and you could have two percent where there are things in there you should have picked up long before in the design process?
Yes, I'd agree with that.
Mr. Barrett.
Well, first of all, I think I'd point out that a lot of our SIDs, we allow a ten percent contingency. And secondly, I, I guess, the amount of time, both staff time and, and other time that we've spent on this in committee, we've probably exceeded two percent of the cost of the steel subcontract on this already.
Mr. Reedy.
My question's to Mr. Mason. I, I know the answer to this, but I wanted on the record from you, change orders are debatable when they're brought to committee?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question, please?
When we get change orders, they are debatable in committee.
Oh, sure. The, you know, the city, the owner of the project or the client certainly has the prerogative to negotiate the final amount of the change order or even reject it, although there is a process by which the contractor or the architect or engineer, whoever is involved with it, can challenge it. And ultimately, it could, you know, go so far as to go to litigation if it isn't satisfactorily resolved. I would, I would also like to clarify the statement that Mr. Bennett made. The ten percent contingency that's established for SIDs is established before the contract is bid out. It's very difficult to project what the cost of a project might be from just a preliminary design or evaluation stage. And what I'm talking about is two percent relative to after the contract has been fully designed and it's been bid out.
Mr. Harris.
Yeah, I was just going to make the same point, that all change orders come before the council, that we can review or reject or approve. Also, again, it should go without saying, but if, if somewhere in the middle of the project, we decided to add four stories to the firehouse, it's going to cost us more and, and the chances of us going above the five percent or two percent in change orders is very good. If, if we come in with additions or, or changes to a project after it started, excuse me, there will be, the change orders will be higher than, than if we, if we don't. It'd be, I, I'm sure if we'd take on these two fire stations that have previously been built, if we'd take out all the city's requests and just gone with the architect's request, you'd have those down in a small percentage of the total projects.
I'd like to just make a comment or two. I would urge the council to approve the contract. I think it's come under very close scrutiny over the last several weeks, and that scrutiny has failed to reveal anything out of the ordinary here or, or anything of substantial concern. In spite of that, Mr. Ballas has, has offered to allow it to be submitted to scrutiny by an independent expert. I think that, that we've had enough expert opinion on this to, to make it clear where we stand, and I don't think we need any further delay in the project. We hire professional architects very carefully and, and expect them to perform. And in this case, I think Mr. Ballas has performed very well and, and exactly to the standard that we would expect. That standard is something that I think we, we have to be continually asking ourselves whether we are holding ourselves to the, to the appropriate standard in terms of specifications and so on. And I've already asked our staff to begin examining what the state of the art is there and find out whether there are any deficiencies in that regard or not, and we'll be glad to work with the council. You have an item referred with regard to that. So I think we've, we've got an ongoing issue of, of quality control that we'd be glad to work with you on, but there is no reason to believe that, that there are any substantial concerns in this case. I'd strongly urge you to approve the contract.
Mr. Sweet and then Mr. Sponseller.
I appreciate the fact that Mr. Sponseller has brought this up and made it the issue that it is. I think all too often, we spend a lot of time scrutinizing contracts that really don't have a lot to do with potential health and safety issues as something like a construction contract like this. Oftentimes, we're scrutinizing contracts where we, as individuals, may have a certain political axe to grind and, and feel compelled to, to suddenly put on our, the glasses of a scrutinizer and look at them with a, and pick through them. And I think from time to time, we need to do this where we take a good, hard look at our practices and our policies as it relates to bidding construction projects such as this. And I think we need to give it the same type of scrutiny that we often do for all the wrong reasons, some of the other projects that are in contracts that come before us. So for that, I thank Mr. Sponseller for bringing this issue up. I, I do have concerns about awarding bids and then having the low bidder that gets the bid bring in change order after change order, even if it only mounts up to two to three percent. Oftentimes, that could come close to equaling one of the other bids that may have been a higher bid that actually foresaw some of those changes and, and worked them into their bid. So I think that we set up kind of an unfair situation for some people out there bidding. I've seen it happen in the business I am in where people will bid a job knowing full well that no one will be looking over their shoulders, and they can make all the changes that they want, or later on down the road, changes can be made, and they don't follow certain specifications. In the business I'm in, it isn't necessarily an issue where a building might fall down. It just may mean some different bushes get put in the ground. But when people bid a job, they expect to have it pretty clear that they're both bidding the same job and they're bidding apples for apples, and that one person bidding apples and the other person bidding oranges, and then coming back in later to make changes.
Mr. Sponseller.
I just want to make reference to the letter that Mr. Ballas provided to us tonight. I'd just like to commend Mr. Ballas for his willingness to engage in a discussion about how engineers, architects and contractors can do a better job, not only for the public sector, but the, I, I would hope that that extends in the private sector as well. I, I have to say that I hope that that discussion puts us in a place where... I, I have to say that I hope that that discussion puts us in a place where we at some point are truly aware of the fact that good construction planning is, is a cost benefit. And it is in fact a cost benefit. Everybody that I've talked to in accounting and engineering and, and the architectural world agrees that the more complete contracts are, the more cost savings there is in the end. And as a matter of fact, there are less safety things that fall through the crack because, cracks I should say, because inadvertently, I, I think through construction practices and shop drawing approval processes and, and so small emissions that seem trivial at the time, things do happen in the end. And complete plans help us to prevent those things. That sets the standard for everybody else. And that's what I expect from paid consultants like our engineers and architects. And I just had one more question for Mr. Ballas and then I think we should get on with it.
Mr. Ballas.
Mr. Ballas, I just wanted to ask you, during this process of conceptualizing the, this fire training facility, did you get all the information that you needed from this city to in fact provide us with a complete set of construction ready plans? You know, if not, I'd like to know about it and I'm sure the rest of the council would so that we can do a better time, better job the next time we do business with a professional consultant.
Andy, I believe we got all the information we could possibly get on, on this particular type of building. While it's, it's very simple building structure, there are some critical issues that go into it. And there are some issues that since it is the interior finishing and fire protection, some of those issues are new. There are very few of these buildings that are really built. There are some issues in here where we're still feeling our way through them. One of our plans is, and I've asked the, the fire chief and the, the contractor if he's approved, is to again go over to Spokane and tour that facility there so they can get firsthand knowledge of how the things were built in Spokane. We found out recently that they've just fireproofed a, a building over there that is new, that uses a fireproofing product similar to what we had spec. We have not been able to find any of that in this area that we could go physically go look at to see what the end results are. So I think we're, we're continually learning how to build this building as best we, we possibly can and give the firefighters as much safety and training as they possibly can get.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote on the contract.
To award the contract to the lowest responsible bidder, Bennett?
Yes.
Crowley?
Yes.
Jingerelli?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Herbig?
Yes.
McGrath?
Pass.
Morgan?
Pass.
Reedy?
Yes.
Spawn Cellar?
Pass.
Sweet?
Pass.
Tracy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Passes care to change their vote, McGrath?
No change.
Morgan?
No change.
Spawn Cellar?
No change.
Sweet?
No change.
Eight i's, zero n's, four passes, zero ups.
Contract is approved. Before we go on, Lois, I just had a question about the minutes. This may have been explained to me before, but why are we getting verbatim minutes from the committee?
I'd have to ask the secretary that, but I, I will.
Marty Raybiden, City Clerk, I can provide some explanation. The secretary did not feel comfortable condensing a lot of the conversations that went on at the committee since this was such a controversial item and of such a degree of technicality that it was very difficult for her to obtain, obtain a broad understanding of exactly what was being discussed. So erring on the side of accuracy, she, she tried to do them as, as verbatim as possible just to, to ensure that the, the accuracy of the minutes was there. This was a little bit outside of the realm of her expertise.
Next is staff comments. Is there any new business? Are there any further referrals? Any other announcements? This is Jingerelli.
I need to ask Mr. Nugent, Jim, I didn't notice until now that you had that jumbo acquisition referral. Did you want to take up with that this Wednesday in conservation or next week? And how long will it take?
Well, we're kind of at the mercy of Five Valley Land Trust and Greg Tolleson. Greg has indicated now for approximately two weeks that it looks like, that there might be a possibility of some money coming in from the United States Forest Service and that we would either, if they can get it here in time, they might want to be part of the closing transaction and get the land up at the north end, budding their land, or else if they can't get it here that quickly, they might buy different land and then trade with us later. And Greg was interested in knowing which option the city preferred.
So how much time should I allot if we need to do it this Wednesday?
I, I don't think you'd need more than fifteen minutes. Ask Greg to try and keep it under fifteen minutes in the council discussion.
Any other announcements? If not, the meeting's adjourned.